All right, I have a call order, the January seventeenth, twenty twenty four Commissioner's Special Meeting.
I'm going to move to adopt the agendas presented with the exception of moving item nine C to after approval of the minutes.
Times of motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a? A public comment? Forward. I'm.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the January third Commissioner's regular meeting as presented in the draft emailed by the County Administrator, January sixteenth at one twenty-four. Yeah.
So that's the second.
That's the last.
Yeah.
Second of the motion. Oh, is it fair?
Aye.
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 All right. Now I'd like to recognize.
Not here.
Well.
You got us all excited.
Good one.
You got us all excited.
About how about back together again?
Yeah, we're good.
All the jobs.
They almost, that's them, right there, right?
Nope. Right behind you somewhere. Wind them, Joe.
They're on the way. We want to. Move on to the UT as I jump back.
I guess so.
Ken.
All right, Noah, are you there?
These are all pretty straightforward. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to move to approve the twenty twenty-four Regional Animal Control Agreement between the town of Hancock and Hancock County as presented.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four Regional ACL MOU between the town of Hancock and Hancock County as presented.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to move to approve the twenty twenty-four Regional Animal Control Agreement between the town of Sullivan and Hancock County as presented.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to move to approve the twenty twenty-four Regional ACL MOU between the town of Sullivan and Hancock County as presented.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It's almost ready. First of all, thank you for moving this topic generally upon the family, but this is an important moment for us, the Sheriff's Office and for side of the motion to throw lieutenant, just want to recognize him in the public meeting. His wife, Polly, will be attending his bed.
Yep, I'm going to move to recognize the promotion of Brian Archer, Lieutenant, graduate.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I never asked for.
Even poking that.
I did that in the warm up.
All right, so ready for the.
Morning.
Morning, Larry Roddick.
So the only thing I got is this budget correction. Once we saw the contract for security, we, we realized that we, we missed the mark there. Back in September, I'd asked Michelle for a number and it was dramatically less than what they came in with. And then we noticed that there was a, a mathematical error, miscalculation in the reserves, so that's kind of what happened there.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the amendments to the airports operating budget for twenty twenty-four. The sum of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars resulting in a total balanced operating budget of nine hundred fifty-four thousand, eight dollars for twenty twenty-four.
Second of the motion. The other discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I did read that thirty-five, seven, eighty-six.
Yeah, yes, you did.
Nothing else, Chris?
Uh, no, we're just plowing snow and having a grand old time out here.
Looks great. On to the DA. Morning. You've given a copy of the.
Been giving a couple of.
Yeah, a couple of copies.
Yeah, so I'm going to make this motion and then I'm going to move to approve the District Attorney Detective Job. District Attorney Detective Job Description as presented in the non-exempt draft emailed to the Commission on January sixteenth at three fifty-four, so that's the second draft.
And I'm going to second the motion.
Yeah.
Michael, the only draft. A draft that we're approving, that the only one that had the, the compensation code of fifteen, didn't it?
Correct.
So if you have a fifteen in front of you, you have the right to.
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay.
And forty hours. Yeah, forty hours.
Forty hours, right, so that's the, that's the. That's the job description we're, we're approving.
Yep.
Now, again, that's, that's a non-exempt position. And I've heard over the documentation. I, I feel that that's appropriate, is there? Sorry. Is there? Is there a worry there amongst that?
I mean, we sat down, all of us went through it, I, I know our understanding of who, or that, that's what it is, so.
And, and you're.
We're okay.
You're okay with that? Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one is. I'm going to move to approve advertising for District Attorney Detective Position as requested. So now that, with that motion, with that, that is going to be based on the first motion. Is that, that's my intention, I want to make sure that my language is correct.
Well, there's nothing wrong with your language, I just want to be sure that.
Yeah, I mean, you should clarify what you're.
And the clarification here is, is that we need to. Authorize the DA to advertise under county's non-union personnel policy. Because that's different than the union, there's been some discussion on whether or not this is a union position. We should be directing Michael to let the union know that we do not recognize this as a unit member. Thus, the advertisement, see, a process that the DA will follow will be, is in the non-union county personnel policy.
So. How about if I threw this?
If you add something to the effect, Paul, that pursuant to the non-union county personnel policy, then.
Well, how about approved advertising for District Attorney as a, as a non-exempt position?
No, non-exempt recovery. Non-exempt, only half of it, non-exempt, he's, he's entitled to time and a half after forty. What we need to do is stipulate that this is a non-union. Because that means that a disloyal is subject to the county's personnel policy, not the SSO union contract.
So if I said as a non-union position, that would.
Yeah, that would.
Okay, so my motion reads, move to approve advertising for District Attorney Detective Position as a, as a non-using position, as a non-union position. Period.
And I'll second the motion. Favor?
Before we vote, that, Mr. Grandeur, that.
That's correct.
Can you understand that allows you now to tell us in-house and outside?
Yeah.
You do have, you do can't hire for ten days, but that doesn't mean you can't go outside and seek application in that ten day period. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. We're all set, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Grandeur.
We're going to jail. Jail, I'm going to move the table aside until Tuesday, February sixth. That, that's still your intention? Table this item or?
We did our testing yesterday, the proposal came today, so. I didn't think it was going to have the temp radios tested. Prove that they would work better and. The iron proved that, so we can have, it's over here, we can wait till.
I, I, I would rather wait just so that there's a memo in there, it's, you know, we're not rushing.
Nope, that's fine. If it's a hardship, then I. Nope. I could be swayed. A little mind of this, I don't know.
We have the tablets and everything in the jail, the Wi-Fi in the jail, and that's what they know. Radio transmission to have a VHF. Sometimes you have to talk to the kitchen to control.
On your handheld, Mike?
On the handheld, yeah, so the doctor Rick at Brown's and he gives UHS Charlie and facility. No one is going to work, we're going to verify it and it worked a lot better, clear.
Okay, you're satisfied with UF?
U.
UHF?
Yes.
That'll do the job.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, now.
A VHF, I mean, we're running, we're running, we're running VHF.
You're running UHF now and you need to go VHF?
Oh. The only reason I, I, I'm for, there's no question, the next, it's just I like the idea of, you know, proposal being in a, just for transparency, I like the proposal being, us having it ahead of time. It's no hardship, I would rather do that, but if it is a hardship at all, I could be swayed.
There has been a change in. Because when I was looking at the register, you know, I was looking at a lesser model. Then I went up yesterday and it said no. So the price is pretty much doubled, I was around thirteen-five now, but he said that's what we need to have because of the dependability, the structure of the radio is strong, it's been radio, that's, I'll put all that in a memo once again.
Okay, but that, but that's it, Paul, I mean, when he refers to Rick, we're talking about Brown's communication, we say identify several times as sole source, so we're not going to put this up again. He has to, well, satisfied with the equipment he's held by and the only thing that's missing is perhaps the coffee for us on what the proposal is, but. I just don't see the purpose of putting it off, if we can settle this today, get it out of the way, move on.
Okay.
What do you want, Joe? I want, I don't have a kind of resolve, I just.
Five or huge.
You can take that out of our.
See, I've not seen it yet either.
Yeah, that's.
None of us have seen that, so.
I did email late yesterday. I like, I emailed late yesterday. Everybody who's been visiting, so.
Okay, never mind.
I, I'm going to move table aside.
I'm second of the motion to table. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I'm not.
Nope, that's fine, does everything happen, everything come together?
Yeah. All right. Okay. I'm going, you just want me to jump in, okay. I'm going to move, move to remove. J.C. Bellrum, is that right?
Yep.
From the county payroll as requested.
So, second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to remove Gabriel Hizzy from county payroll as requested.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to remove Alitha Kelly from county payroll as requested.
Second of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, I'm sorry if I portraits.
Coming late, I tried to get an agenda addition, we have a by-time officer, Keith Grundy, let's try to promote him to full-time effective, sadly, I know that's probably agenda now. You want me just to do it for the next? Okay.
All right. You could still work in the break-in.
I'll work in. If you're under reasons, keep on.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning again, I've got just a couple of items on here, first one is to approve the High Gregory Mayhart as Patrol Deputy effective January seventeenth. At twelve, thirty dollars and forty-four cents, Greg has five years of experience with the Evans County Sheriff's Office and he is a drug recognition expert. He gave his wife and family more recently here. They live in Southwest Harbor and becomes highly recommended upon the sheriff and chief deputy from Evans County, meets all qualifications.
I'm going to move to approve hiring Gregory Mayhart as Patrol Deputy effective January seventeenth. At step twelve. As requested.
Second of the motion. The other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gregory's here.
Welcome.
No, he's not twelve, he's older than twelve is old.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Be. That's a compliment, by the way.
I don't very often get that sent over. A couple requests for upper funding to purchase impact printers at the cost of nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents, I guess I'll address that one first. I sent you a packet of that and I believe we may have Jim Willis on here to explain a little more about this. Morning, Chief. These are going to save a lot of time and they're going to save us a lot of headaches in the sense that when the legislature passed a bill last year, or maybe it was two years ago. Where the traffic stop, an officer is required to determine the best of their ability. Or orientation, sex and those types of things, so this will automatically do this. If summons is written, it automatically, all the information goes to the state, so eliminates our paperwork. So I'll defer to Jim if he would maybe explain it a little more articulately than, than I have.
You guys hear me okay this morning?
Yes.
All right, I'm, I'm here in my, my new role as law enforcement liaison with the Bureau of Highway Safety. The e-citation program that the sheriff's talking to you about is funded by the Bureau of Highway Safety, it has been for several years. It's essentially an electronic way of writing a ticket for a traffic infraction. It's pre-built with pull-down menus for all the violations, fine amounts, all of that. It, it's a program that gets installed on the laptop of a cruiser typically, anywhere you really want to write a ticket, as soon as the ticket is issued. It is transmitted directly to the court system, usually within a couple of minutes. If connectivity is an issue, it gets stored on the local device until you're back into connectivity and then it's transmitted at that time. So if people want to pay their ticket, they could actually do it the same day, or if they want to ask for trial, they could do it the, the same way. This, he's, Scott's also talking to you about the, the racial and ethnic data collection that every law enforcement agency in Maine is going to be required to be doing in July. The Bureau of Highway Safety asked the people that wrote the e-citation program to enhance it, to, to be able to collect that data. And my counterpart and I have been going around the state showing everyone how it works, I, I think that's how we landed on your agenda. The program is free to use, it's paid for by the Bureau of Highway Safety, but it does come with a requirement to buy printers. The printers have been funded through grants for the last previous three years and, and actually due to low in participation, they, the grant funding ended for this year. That, that may come back in future years, I don't know whether it will or not, but I think the, the rush, what I'm seeing now is this data collection, nobody really has a good way to do it and this will give everyone in the state a singular platform to do it. And that too will have an automated handoff to the Attorney General's Office monthly, I believe. The, the other thing it's going to do is add in a, it's, it's, we call it a metro switch. So when you stop a car, you're able to put the license plate of the car in, it will automatically run that license plate, give you owner and vehicle information and automatically populate the citation for you. And the same thing for the driver, you can run somebody's license right through the program and auto-populate the ticket. Those are all things that are being done manually now, so the, the new version should be out in a couple of months and what we've been encouraging people to do is wait for the new version. Because it's going to be easier to use, easier to install and get your hardware ready now so that when it's ready to go live, you'd be good to go. Questions about that?
Well, so if. If the county didn't have a, a system like this with the software, the printers, what are counties doing when they have to comply to the. New regulations that come out in the summer?
I, I haven't seen an alternative, I, most of you probably know I was a police chief for a long time in Hancock County and we used Hancock County Spillman server. Spillman has the functionality in it, but it's, it's extremely complex and cumbersome and we really couldn't figure out how to make it work well without probably spending a whole lot of money with. Administration and add-ons and I think we all know Spillman's expensive, so I, I think we in, in Bar Harbor, when I was chief there in Mount Desert, we abandoned it and bought e-citation printers. I think three years ago, either two or three years, we, we came in early, so before all this racial data stuff was, wasn't there, but for me, it's another reason to, to use it. So I, I don't have a good answer to your question, Commissioner, because I don't know what people are doing outside of this.
You've listed, you needed twenty-one, can you tell me who's getting these? All, everybody that has access to a laptop, that would be, everybody should be from chief deputy down.
In other words, anybody who would.
Anybody who's going to make traffic stop. Yeah, correct, and, you know, talking to other administrators around the state, what their concern is with this identifying race, et cetera, et cetera. Is that the deputy's not, or, or the officer's not going to put themselves in a situation where they identify somebody as someone and then they're not, or, or a certain race. And comes back and it becomes a problem, consequently, they're not going to make traffic stops, you know, the deputy or the officer in there might going to say, I don't want to open myself up to this heavy. So. It takes a lot of that and it removes the paperwork.
So, can I have a stupid question, I guess, so maybe I'm not getting it, so you have to identify people's races when they get traffic stopped.
Correct.
So the officers.
It's different than that, the, the new statute is requiring officers to record their perception of, of certain aspects about people, the male, female. Of ethnicity and things like that prior to the, like at the time of the stops, when you turn your lights on, what was your perception of this person? That's, that's what the officers are being asked to report.
They're still going to.
Very different than, than putting information down after you stop somebody and have a conversation.
All right. You said it was used to be the police chief and bar, bar for.
So how is it, so again, like, I guess I don't understand, like, if it's all based off of the officer's perception of the, the different factors, they're still. And putting it in themselves, right?
And it's scanned in, correct, Jim?
Yeah, it's. If I had the screen in front of me, there would be a button that says new stop and then you're prompted whether you want to do a warning or a citation. And once you pick one of those, it, it, then, before you can finish the stop and transmit it into the system, there's a, the questions are there in a drop-down menu, what were your perceptions about these things? And then the officers would answer them and those are the ones that comply with the statute.
My understanding, as far as installation, is that it's just points into the computers, Chief?
Uh, most of the, most of the printers I'm experienced with are USB. They either will go in the headrest of a, like the passenger side headrest of a cruiser or in the console. I've given sample quotes to every, I think I gave them to Lieutenant Day, just so they could have them to go by and he could pick what works best for you. I think Elsworth PD's been using them for years, Bar Harbor, Mount Desert, Foxport, State Police, the main state police are using this new system I'm telling you about, they were the test agency, so that's live with them at, at this point, I think statewide.
Okay, so I, I, I understand the importance of this and agree with it, why? There's a poll in front of us, so therefore you're asking that it be sole source. Is there, but I don't see any justification for that, can you help me with that?
This was the information that we were given and I believe we received that from, from you folks, Jim?
I, I'm using two sets of quotes that we, people have just let me borrow, one of them happens to be from Bar Harbor PD, I still have friends there. And the other one, I think, was from another sheriff's department in Southern Maine, maybe York County, that probably bought more and both of them recognized state contract pricing, which. Generally, you can't beat it, once, once they agree to sell it as state contract pricing, that's something the state has negotiated and we rely on that for a lot of things over the years, vests and weapons and.
Yeah, I'm just looking for language, but.
Those, those particular printers, they go over the headrest and they were the only printer that we found that was approved by the Highway Safety, safety, is the reason we picked those.
So there's no reason for this to go on.
I, I still have a problem with why I need twenty-one though, I'm, I'm looking at sixteen deputies who are in this type of business and I don't know where the other. Five a day. And you're just talking sixteen patrolmen, is that what you're talking about? Statants, patrolmen, statants. Right. And, and who else you've. Patrol lieutenant should have them, the detectives should have them because they work long day, which is pretty much exclusively. Traffic that they're working, so sixteen.
And so. Does that take a standard piece of letter paper?
No.
So, no, it's a.
The roll.
It's, the printers are thermal printers, so you have to buy thermal paper and, and Scott, you'll have to make a note of that in your budget because it costs more than regular paper, but. Some more, some things we didn't talk about with those printers, Bill, that may help you understand the need is, you can also print other things, so. Protection orders have gone electronic now, if you're somewhere and you find somebody you need to serve a protection order on, you can log into the system of printing your cruiser, trespass warnings. Anything like that, you, you could just print it right in the field now, if you have these printers.
We get those all the time where if somebody has protection or they've got to come back, get the paperwork, garbage, so they can serve you right there.
Is there a annual maintenance fee, Jim, for this?
No, not at this time, the Bureau of Highway Safety is covering all of that and as far as I know, they plan to.
So if they stop, if they stop covering it, how much is that, do you know?
No idea. The, the current version that, that people are using has, have, I don't want to confuse this too much because this is going away, but there are things called security certificates that had to be installed and it made it really cumbersome. And we're moving away from those, this new version won't have security certificates, those come with a cost that was also covered by the state, but should you have to buy those, they're, they're probably near a thousand dollars an officer per computer, but the, again, those are going away. But the recurring cost, I, I don't, I don't know because highway safety is always paid for, it's just similar to the, the main crash system, the, remember when we went away from the thirteen-twenty accident report forms on paper? It went electronic and, and highway safety has always paid for that, same company, same programming, same model, from what I know.
I'm going to move to approve person twenty-one inkjet printers and related materials and supplies from Advanced Electronics Design Incorporated as a sole source, sum of nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Such funds to be paid from using a, a fund. Such funds to be paid from using uh a funds.
Well, I still have questions about this, and I'm concerned about the number we're getting, so I'll never decide.
I'll second the motion.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see it put off for two weeks. And take it over and visit it again next week.
What is it, in the end, what is it you'd like to get?
I have some. Some of the issues I have, I want to talk to some people and whatnot, and.
We got the people, right?
In confidence.
Okay, so. Procedurally, what could happen? If I move to table this item, there's a motion and a second on the floor. So what would happen is when we took it up, we'd be discussing this motion. So that would, that would frame, because the motion stands such a.
We'd have to add to the motion on the floor before you reconsider.
No, I, I don't, I could table the motion till the next meeting. Would that do what you want, or? You know, my, my sense is that if we voted on this, well, I don't know what happened if we voted on this motion. But. If we tabled it, that would allow everybody to gather what information they had, so. Uh, I'm gonna move to table action on this item till the next regular.
What what information do we need? I mean, this is, you know, I I can go on and on and on. Maybe I'll have Timmy Richardson next time.
Well, there was no motion that uh, I made that motion. Okay, I'll withdraw the motion. So it's still, nobody's saying.
Why to withdraw the second motion? Because you're intimidated by the sheriff?
No, the only reason I'm. I I I'm just trying to clarify, he asked a question that is. In my view, legitimate, uh, he's asking what further information? Uh, are we requesting? And I'm just trying to give a chance to answer that question. If if. If the answer is, I don't know, then that is the answer.
Commissioner Clark wants to discuss the matter.
Would that discussion be with me, or was that discussion with? Well, I guess that answers that question.
Okay, so uh, he's my role. My motion to table aside action on this item till the next regular scheduled meeting. Is on the table, is there saying?
I second the motion to table. Others in favor?
I apologize, Jim, and thank you for for coming to.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Second request is watch guard cameras and six, please, for total of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and forty cents. It's outlined. Two, need to go in the patrol lieutenants, one in the chiefs, one in a civil vehicle, one in a detective vehicle. And one in the jail van. One for the jail van is because of some comments that have been made. By uh people being transported, um, that should be captured. If you have that, so again, this is what I'm asking for that from the funding. Uh, and this one is a little different, is this is in the union contract, um. That specifies that civil process, that that all, everybody has the same equipment. Uh, assigned to them, cruiser, and uh, equipment as specified by the sheriff. Now, I didn't originally install. Cameras in them, that was well before my time, but uh, this one's a little different in that sense. These are the six that I would need. Was there a quote from a vendor for those?
There is. I believe I sent that stuff up today.
That should have been in the meeting materials.
Okay, that was. You elaborate on that.
Because I come in directly from all the law, the manufacturer who now owns Watch Guard.
Okay, and indeed. It sounds like these are the systems that are in all the other vehicles except these. Is that correct? So there's no new management of data or anything like that. It's it's what we have.
No, and uh, last week I received a survey from the Attorney General's Office. Requesting information on in car cameras, requesting information for body cameras, who has them, how many, and that type of stuff, so. It's progressing to the point that eventually body cameras will be something I suspect that. By as well. But this will uh outfit crew, everybody having except for me. I don't do any traffic stops, I don't get many, many chases, so uh, it's not necessary to spend that kind of money just to put in my pickup.
So I'm gonna move to approve person six. Uh.
Watch guard.
Watch guard cameras as sole source uh in the total sum of thirty-eight thousand seven. Thirty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and forty cents, with such funds to be paid using upper funds. My understanding is that these are going in the two patrol lieutenants' vehicles. Chief Deputy, Civil Vehicle, and Detective.
And Jail Transporter Dave, that's what you outlined. That's fine, I'll.
Alright, I'll second the motion. Alright, discussion?
Well, first of all, I think this is extravagant. The biggest benefits to having this, to capture evidence in case of, for example, traffic, so. Second of all is it helps monitor the driving habits of the client of the operator. And I don't think that's necessary for these six vehicles to. They don't, they don't fall within this. Thirty-eight thousand dollars and.
He's coming from me.
What, what about the condition of the filling part of the union contract?
No, it's a stretch. It's a stretch. Let you come in and make that case. That's that's silly. There's a, there's a limit, I mean, we can't be.
Can you speak on the, yeah, the jail van? The reason we might have that jail van, we do some.
Tim, can you just speak on that? Only because of.
Sometimes the officers transporting opposite sex, um. Encasured individuals, just that's the only reason I don't like to have something bad in the van, just to. Save comments or.
Okay, so I'd I'd agree to the jail van. I think civil is silly.
Was that, was it second? Can you speak to whether you're, the idea of being together vehicles?
The uh, patrol lieutenant's foot, and I'll give you a perfect example, where it's not just for traffic stop. We got an incident in October that was enforced issues. And the in car cameras uh captured that, and that stuff was sent to the Attorney General's Office and helped in that investigation. So. You know, it's just. I I'm just not gonna make this into a show. You either give us the proper equipment, I'll let the union know that you didn't approve them per union contract. And we'll go from there.
To me, this makes sense. I. My guess is a patrol lieutenant gets called as backup for a, for a. Deputy once in a while, so that would be useful, I imagine, the same thing is for for the detective. I understand jail transport, and I certainly, uh, same scenario holds true for the chief deputy, I would think.
Alright, I'll call the vote. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Others opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you, John. Excuse me? Good of comment, you call me?
Yes, I do.
I I appreciate it. Well, I expect you to contact me about those other ones.
I'll contact you as soon as you give us the information we need.
Tell me what you need, and I. It's on the agenda. Tell me what you need.
Well, I see still.
Alright. Alright, I T.
Duncan Bandit? So, my guess is that. Judging from this, uh. It's been reviewed by HR, and that's. Why the suggested motion reflect, is reflective of that, that process, right?
Correct.
And then, uh, there was a question about multi-year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't receive any. He was working on it the last thing I knew, so I haven't received anything from, from either one of them.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to table this item, uh, to the next. Regular meeting, yeah.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright. Uh, we were discussing a little bit last time, uh, and Bill wasn't there for that part of the. The discussion, but uh, I did hear back from Tim Poitras with Chester Carney. Uh, who's our current auditor. They're interested in continuing the the with bid process, and I also heard from another. Uh, our HR Smith in Buxton, so it does seem like it's worth our time to go through the RFP process. That's all.
I would agree. Move to authorize a treasurer to issue an RFP for audit services for the calendar year. Calendar years, plural, twenty-three to twenty-seven.
Second of all, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Issues. We've got the uh. Twenty twenty-four ready, full-time employees dissection.
Okay, so, before you start, I have a few questions. No, the only reason I'm asking the questions now is because hopefully you'll touch on them. This is a quite complicated spreadsheet. Where uh.
She'll come up and explain it.
No, I I can understand it, but uh. What a. What a, to me, all these should be people. You know, the problem is they're not because of.
They never will be.
They never will be, well, that's too bad. That was my hope.
Yeah.
My hope is, I think something to strive for. But um. Last time I, I made a stab at getting that. You know, what I thought was parity, but uh. I understand pushback, and I agree with it. And there was discussion about stepping this, you know, to to sort of get there, hopefully. So. My mind was, you know, go, there there's three clear steps here, you know. Uh, looking not at the spreadsheet, but at the contribution sheet. Uh, is that something that makes sense? Is that? My, my feel here?
There's no way that I would tell you in a public meeting that you're. I I mean, the 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 arguments and the discussion points really that were brought up last time are still there. I mean, you're gonna have some. Employees that are non-inunions that are gonna say, why should we have the same contribution when we got a three percent this year and they got a six or seven percent? So that's not going away, I mean, regardless of what you do. And, you know, to bring parity to this, yes. Well, then I think the other argument among non-unions. Can we get parity countywide on salaries, you know?
Well, which I agree with that point, and I think, you know, not this year, but last year, we tried to do that, and this year. Uh, I mean, I would have liked to do that, but it just, we all saw the budget. Uh, so, I understand that point. I I, and I don't know how to be, to be honest. I'm not sure this is the way to deal with it, but uh.
I mean, the the big issue last time obviously was when you threw it out there, you wanted it all made up immediately, and it wasn't even for. Yeah. Like all of it, it would get us up to the highest contributor right now in the county, so I mean, that definitely was part of the initial sticker shot.
Well, and and, quite frankly, I was wrong, because it 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 wouldn't introduce parity, it would. It would actually create, you know, the opposite problem. And this, you know, the information you've given us proves that. So uh, I mean, is there, you wrote in your memo, you wrote extensively on it. Do you have a recommendation? Or or does, not you, but does staff have?
Well, I mean, I guess part of it ties back to what is the commissioner's ultimate goal. So I mean, i- is it really that you want every. Everybody on this spreadsheet to be contributing the same amount. And if that's the case, then obviously you have to look at. How can, again, and we know, one, because we just finished the union, I mean, we we know what happened with that. And we've been honest with the union about that. When the next contract comes around, there's gonna be some sticker shot for people for them, because. You missed the whole three-year cycle.
Yes.
So to get to that is obviously gonna be a larger increase for them when we start negotiations, three, two and a half, three years. Uh, so part of it does get back to what do you want to do? Are you looking for a percentage contribution? I mean, are you looking for uh. Percentage of wages, or overall wages, or budget amounts? I mean, there's a number of different ways we could sit down and kind of run. Spreadsheet calculations for you, uh. Even just trying to keep it with the percentages, I mean, of what contributions are, we could try to start raising that gap, and. But it would be incremental over time. It's not gonna happen immediately, unless you want it to, and then you're gonna obviously have to increase the size of that.
I I'm. Honestly, this way, the way that Hancock County is doing it seems very cumbersome to me. Because it introduces things like this. Is that what other municipal and county entities are doing?
I mean, all the ones that I've been associated with, and I can only speak what I've been associated with. This is still a pretty good contribution, right, you know?
Still what?
A good contribution, right, for for all of these, you know, because, and and if you go with many municipalities, you go with MMA. MMA basically has like eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollar premiums, or more, just like twenty-three hundred for. Families, and they will cover basically the the twelve hundred dollar single employee, and if you want the rest of it, you're on your own. So you don't get these other types of options for the rest of your family. So in honesty, it's hard for me to sit here and say, now. Could, is that industry standard wide? I mean, generally speaking, I think for many places with MMA, the trend is to go more that way. But there are some municipalities that. You know, you come on and you get family. I mean, and and they pay those costs, and it's built into part of your overall again, package of what you have.
Because what what I don't like about. This, and specifically what I suggested last time, is that. Thinking about it, what we're doing is we're driving the state between union and and. Staff, and I don't like that. I, you know, to me, I want to treat everybody the same, whether they're. Union or not. Uh, I don't, that might be sort of a pie in the sky goal, but that that would be my goal.
Tell you one thing, when I looked at this over. And I know it's not, this would be like so uh, not uh, appreciated from you, but. I'm gonna do it anyway. I don't really quite get, and I'm not saying we're gonna change anything, because you guys already done it, but. I have no concept of why we're having the contribution be the same. For employee, spouse, and family, when it's a twenty-five percent, almost a twenty-five percent more expensive policy. I mean, I don't, I don't get it, I mean. So I mean, I I mean, it's fine, I guess that's where we're at, but I'm wondering a little bit why.
It did, it didn't used to be. It used to be three step.
Now it's all the same, same, same thing, yeah.
It has been since twenty nineteen.
Well, that's what I mean, but it used to be a three step.
It used to be, yeah, I mean, it's always been twenty.
There's four categories. It's three rates of pay. The last two categories have the same rate. And yet there's a six-thousand-dollar difference between the premium.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, but, you know, Sean's point, I agree with. I don't agree with the fact that you can't leave him out of it though.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out like when we're gonna do it, where we're gonna start.
This is, this could be global, but the other problem I have is that every county employee decides what level of insurance they want. Now, if you're talking about a new entry in the janitorial service, making forty thousand dollars a year, I don't know, just type something down on what they make. But if it's not even, not even that, thirty-five thousand, anyways, let's just say that, well, say thirty-five thousand, and they want a family plan, they're gonna pay seventy dollars, so they would have paid twenty-three. And if you had the lieutenant in the sheriff's department, been here for thirty years and whatnot, making ninety-five thousand dollars a year, he's gonna pay seventy-two dollars a year. And I guess the problem I'm having is, is that.
So it's a week, right?
I mean, right. And the problem I'm having is, is that the, the amount that we're charging the employees' contribution is not proportional to what we're paying them. And I would, I'd like to see that addressed over a period of time, that, that we recognize the earning potential of one group over another, and we consider the contribution based upon that earning potential. And at the same time, I'd like to see that we go to four steps in that contribution. And the step four, employee, spouse, be less than the family plan. We have actually four levels of contribution. That's not gonna be solved tomorrow with the fact that we have three union contracts we have to deal with, is we put this, any effort to do this over a period of several years, but.
Well. Are there? Okay, what I don't like is, I have no expertise, you know, and I don't know. Are there, does MMA or, or some organization like that have sort of giants on?
We do have a company that has worked with the county in the past and they're still kind of on our rolodex, to use an old term. That, um.
Acadia Benefits.
Yeah.
Was it?
Acadia.
Acadia Benefits.
Acadia Benefits, like John Kennedy, Jack Kennedy.
Jack Kennedy.
Yeah. Uh, that we could contact and consult with, see what they might be willing to do to come in and kind of advise the county as to how to globally address this.
Well, 'cause one other thing, you know, let's see, we make a motion to solve this the way it is. My feeling, we're just kicking the can down the road. This, this is gonna keep coming up, and I understand why it keeps coming up. I, I, I just like the, I know a town government, I'd never, my thirteen years there, I'd never dealt with it like this. It was, you know, quite frankly, I don't know if it came from staff or if it came from somebody like Acadia Benefits, but they were, you know, they, they had a, you know, a, a plan or a attack of, of how to get there and be fair. That, that's what I want. I'm just, I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for.
For, well, I mean, that certainly gives us a jumping point. I, I mean, it doesn't solve the immediate question, what are we gonna do, obviously, for this year going forward?
Well, here's what, here is what I was thinking for, this year, was this using the sheriff's office CBA. And, and, and my three-step process, I was looking at, you know, using the sheriff's office CBA numbers for year one, year two. I, I know this is supposed to be done every year, but I was just trying to put in people's mind where, where we were going. Year two, going to the jail and then eventually to the, uh, to the RCC. But that mean, if we're gonna do that, that means that we really should be introducing consistency where we can. Otherwise, we're just introducing consistency on the back of these folks, which I don't think is fair. I don't know, Michael, I, I, does that, that does going to the sheriff's office CBA numbers for this year, that solves the immediate problem. But I think for me to suggest that, I think we need some light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah. I mean, I think, and that's why we're having the discussion. I mean, if the three of you are interested, I can contact Acadia and talk, and talk with them at the meeting and we can kind of give a general overview of the discussions and the breakdown of where we're at. And then see what they would charge us to solve in order to provide that. I know, I know in the past, there were certain things they provided regularly anyway, that weren't necessarily additional costs. But when we've spoken with them last year, we met with them specifically once Mary Ann came on board. But they generally seem to be reasonable and they have a longstanding history with the county from the way it was explained to me. So if we kind of know what your global is, we can at least come back to you and say, okay, here's some ideas we've discussed. And to get there, if you wanna have an outside consultant look at it, then, you know, this is the ballpark.
So that, and, and you've thrown out an option. Do you agree with that option? Do you, is Mary Ann, is that something that, is that a tack?
I like it better than personally, the piecemeal approach that just, you know, we come in every year to you or we negotiate and we try to pick out what a number. It just seems like there's more uniformity there as to how it would be done, if we can accomplish that. But, I mean, this is what we've done since two thousand nineteen when we split over. And it was kind of close to start with, but obviously the gap has kind of changed over time due to a variety of factors. So I, I think you'll continue to see the gaps, I guess, if, if you piecemeal it. Buy union every time a contract's done and buy every, annually, every year for the, the non-union.
I totally agree. I think the disparity is gonna get worse if we keep doing what we're doing. And, and this, you know, it's gonna be even more resentment as we move forward. Again, doing all the talking.
I just think if we do a six-dollar a month increase, that's pretty much what I was thinking.
Oh, which is in between those two.
It's such a step.
That happen at a month, six dollars a month, six dollars, is that six dollars a month or six dollars a week?
Six dollars a week.
Okay.
You said months, why this one's, sorry.
So you're, you're saying it would be where, uh, for the rates, so if you go down, yeah, go down to the bottom and then on to the second column. So it would be sixty-six.
Take away the cost of living increase.
You think three percent of your increase is the same as thirty-six dollars? Is that all you're making a year?
No, but what I'm not, I'm just saying though, that is how, that is how hourly employees will see it. You see, they sit there and they figure out what their three percent.
Three percent's the cost of living. It's not their raise. So, but.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, they're, they're, I'm just saying that they say, they look and figure out how much you take away when you do that. Well, could, all right, use Paul's example last, last time, when he, what did, was it like, was it like thirteen dollars or thirteen fifty? I mean, they sat right down and figured it out that, that their three percent cost of living raise, that was so much a week, was, it went from like thirty dollars or twenty-three dollars down to ten. Do you, do you see, that's how they look at it. So, so you gave me a raise and now it's ten dollars and you get taxes on, you know what? That's what I'm saying.
But of course, the problem is exactly in what you said. Three, that is a cost of living. It's not a raise. Some employees are still getting raises every year.
No, they're not.
Well.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Every two years and the steps, and steps happen, right? Am I wrong how it works?
Steps happen, but, but then when you get to that point, they only happen every two years. And, okay, but still.
Let's just get real though. That is the raise.
Okay, but if, if we wanna get real, the one thing that you guys need to remember is we are not a pro, for-profit business. We are public servants. And so we're not getting paid what people outside get paid. We are not.
Okay, so, you know, it's a broken record here. Let me look at it. In a month, for a family plan, oh no, for, uh, yeah, for a month, uh, three oh three, right, right? For a family plan. For the meeting, I looked at mine on the retail side. My family plan, it was only two hundred and fifty dollars. Oh wait, that's a week I pay. So.
But your hourly rate is probably more than what's going on here. I'm, I'm just saying.
Not if we look at it as a supervisor's pay. Right? It's pretty much the same as what a supervisor here makes. So, all I'm saying is to try to compare it to, you know, try to compare it to the, the outside world. The outside world, you pay more. I pay three times as much. I pay like thirteen thousand dollars a year just for my healthcare, for my family. So you're right, like, well, I guess it's a bad decision on my part to have that job. But to moan about thirty-six dollars more a month, to me is a little sad, to be honest. I mean, you've got an incredible insurance policy, better coverage, and you're paying pennies for it. I not like what I'm saying, but it's the truth.
But.
Last year, last year, there was no increase.
Yeah, no.
One year, you know, but, but you need to realize that some of these hourly employed people cannot afford to pay that. Some of them in, I'm being serious, cannot afford to pay that and then live.
Well, I think that's beyond our capability, although, to, to try to address personal financial issues for the employees. But I do think that we do have responsibility to perhaps charge them proportionally to what their earnings are. So that everybody in this bracket earns this amount, should be paying the same. And if you're in a much higher bracket, then you should be expected to contribute more. And so I would like to take Paul's suggestion in, do an increase today for non-union employees and then schedule a meeting with Acadia so they can come in and we can talk to them about what we would like to see in an overall multi-year plan for getting to a certain. So Paul, I'd like to see a five dollars a month increase for non-union affected the next paycheck.
So, so sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five.
Seventy per month?
Per week.
Per week.
I'm using weekly numbers and because that's how they're represented.
Yes.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. Five dollars a week increase. We're not going to solve the disparities today with this issue. But, and I'm still sick of the fact that we failed to address this in sheriff's department's contract. But nevertheless, we can't do to the non-union people what we're going to do to the union three years down the road. And that's sticker shot, we increase that, recognizing there should have been increases every year. So I think until we makes, have some global plan in place that addresses all these issues, I'd like to do, and I think, five dollars in a modest increase.
Okay. And, and Michael, I totally took over your presentation.
Oh, no, no, I mean, that's, that's the discussion. We didn't really have much of a presentation. We had been asked, obviously, to lay it out, what the changes were, what it looked like. And that, that's kind of what was put together on the spreadsheet. So we're really trying to have these conversations to find out what, what do you wanna do? And, and I, I mean, I, my perspective again is the piecemeal approach isn't necessarily the best because you probably are gonna widen those exactly.
It's gonna get worse.
So if there's a way to come up with making something that at least we can point to and say, you know what? This isn't arbitrary. There's a basic premise on what we're doing here.
So, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna move to set the twenty-twenty-four regular full-time employees exempted, appointed elected officials' employee contributions for health insurance at sixty-five dollars per week percent. Seventy dollars per week for employee with, with child, children, and seventy-five per week for employees with spouse, family.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
And I'll second your motion.
Okay, and, and the discussion. I really think that you, that staff needs to work with, with somebody, whether it's Acadia or whoever you think is prudent. It might mean that you have to reach out to more than one. I don't know. But, you know, whatever you think is prudent. Because I think this needs to get solved. I mean, there's points on both sides here that are valid. And, and really, we shouldn't be revisiting, visiting this every year. It's just, it's, it's not right. It, it could change too easily with the personalities that are sitting up here and the personalities are gonna change over time. Uh, so I, I really think this motion is a band-aid. You know, we need to come up with a, a, you know, a plan like we've discussed. I know it's not gonna be tomorrow, but we need to get there.
Call the, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, I'm not sure what Paul meant, but this discussion with this Acadia, that's the people you're gonna bring in. I think it's critical to think how much to talk to us because this table right here is going to make these decisions every year. And if this, if the three of us change in five years, you could have a whole different philosophy. Nothing you have to do about that. But I would like to see that we have a plan in place and it would help us with union negotiations. Because that way it becomes less subjective, you know, less subjective about how much we're gonna increase. If we could go to an objective plan, multi-year plan for how we're going to determine contributions.
Totally agree with you, but I, I do think that staff needs to, you know, huddle and work with these people and bring us some alternatives.
So, I mean, we obviously will provide the initial orientation with them, and then I think it's reasonable, especially before you start spending money toward it, that they come and explain some potential alternatives for you. It may be multiple things, I mean, so they may wanna come and try to really ascertain what is your goal at the end of the day. Which is obviously up to you, not for us to necessarily totally decide. We can advise you, obviously, like you, but, but I would suspect that, that they probably wanna meet you anyway, just to outline what they might be able to do for the county. So that before you, you know, went ahead and hired them, that at least both sides have an understanding of what it is that you're, you're doing.
And Julie, I'll tell you that be careful what you wish for because Acadia might come in here and say, as a government agency, what now, you people aren't once you're interested in any government agency in Hancock County. I'm just saying, I don't know if that's the case, but I do believe that we have a good.
I do think you have a good insurance and, and I do, I seriously do. But you still have the division of the groups of employees. And, and, and it's not that everything is always my opinion. It's that I'm the one that will come up here and not be afraid to speak for everybody else.
Oh, okay, but one of my goals, just so you know upfront, is exactly what Julie said, is, is to be fair across all of us. What you enter on, that's my primary goal.
That's, that's one thing. I can honestly say you guys have always had great health insurance. I mean, you did work on the pay scale, but kind of. But that's what I'm saying. It is, it is good insurance. You do have good benefits and I do tell people that.
But we didn't talk about equity of pay. There's no way that everybody's gonna get the same rate of pay.
Oh, no, it's not the equity. It's the, it's the little bit of distance up, you know, like. You know, like they get six or seven, and we get three, we're already on a lower pay scale, and you know what, you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying, just a little equity in the upward movement, even though our scale is different. That's, that's the thing.
Okay, the the next item I'm really confused on, and I read your.
Thought that was Chris Lee.
So this, because it's sort of a similar subject.
Yeah, I mean, to a degree, yes, so, and basically, this issue is the one that we talked about several months ago, but kind of we were working on other things, and they got put aside a little bit, we came up with different rendition and stuff. Now, why it's kind of, why we're bringing it back to you is one, we need to solve this issue too. But during the calculations, obviously, to update things, we have two employees that are on a different way of calculating. And that's been repeatedly said to me over and over, and finance will confirm that, HR will confirm that. During that time period, for whatever reason, and you had this basic thing here that talks about the health insurance, and we went for all through that, but it includes the first paragraph, but does that apply to all three paragraphs, all those discussions that we had? And I'm trying not to get us back to that point yet, because we wanna focus on what are we gonna do with these, these particular employees. So anyway, the adjustments were made, and letters were sent to these two individuals, and then obviously, they asked what was up, so we sat around and talked, discussed, and indicated fairness, we weren't gonna change and add any additional contribution to them, yet. We wanted to have these conversations today with the commission. But basically, you have two different ways of calculating those contributions. One is that you calculate, just like we just did, you come up with whatever the contribution amount is, whatever group you fall in, that's how much you're gonna pay, depending on, as as we stated, depending on the plan you choose. So you know that that's gonna be what the regular current employees are gonna pay. Now, there was that group of employees before that stopped two thousand and seven percent, two thousand and eleven for everybody, that were under a different system. The system brings about the second component to it. Okay, so first, we have the contributions, everybody in theory is is contributing whatever the set dollar amount was that was agreed to, either through CBA or through your determination. All right, so you've got that.
That's what we just did.
That's what we just did. So now, tomorrow, everybody knows, you know, they're gonna be sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five. This retirement policy thing for health insurance for that group of of prior individuals that were here, employed, had two components to it, so, and this is technically written down to keep this separate. You had a benefit level that was based upon the consecutive years of service. So, if you worked here for ten years and you're one of those qualifying employees before this stop, then you would get a benefit level of fifty percent. If you worked here twenty years, then your benefit level would be a hundred percent. Most of the employees or the county that even fall into that group, as the way it's been explained and and we've looked at, fall into a system that calculates their retirement contribution, I mean, the health insurance, whatever, for retirees in that group, in two different ways. The first is whatever the applicable contribution is that was set by either their union or by you as commissioners. So that's step one. Step two of the contribution is looking to see what benefit level that they get. So if they've only been here ten years under that, they would receive fifty percent. So the way that most people are paying is, they pay their regular weekly contribution, and then they also have to pay the difference of what it is for the other half of of the overall cost of health.
So the key word there is "and."
And. It's the way that, I understand you correct, most of them have been calculated. So, and that would be, again, two, two components, that's what your rate is. There's two accounts, at least at this point, that we know for sure, that had basically for whatever reason, and and I believe they may be online or here, we tell you how that evolved as well, but for whatever reason, basically, their insurance contribution was based upon whatever the benefit level was, so if they can retire after twenty years here, then in theory, they'd be getting, they, it was understood to be a hundred percent, and they wouldn't have to pay any contribution towards there, until they get above sixty-five, is that correct?
So, so there would be "or."
Basically.
But you have, you never exercised the other half of the "or."
It was agreed upon, and obviously, I think the rates, I mean, were more of the higher percentage, correct, it's like eighty and thirty-five or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it wasn't, we're not like down to fifty, but basically, it's a contribution amount based on whatever that, so yearly, that would, if you're keeping up with it, yearly, since the health cost will likely go up every year, you'll expect an increase for them anyway, but it's only, again, on whatever the set percentage is, ninety-five, ninety, fifty, whatever that set percentage of what the overall cost, the total cost of the plan to the county, because we'll just pay it all, and we gotta figure it out from there.
Collect.
Collect, parcel it all out. So, I mean, there is that potential every year for it to go up, but basically, you have two ways. You either do it based on just this one retirement page in the policy that says number of years that you worked, benefit level, and you pay just the remaining percentage that that's not paid for by the county, according to this policy, but this policy arguably, now, this is where the two blend, arguably can be interpreted to be that it's done the way that it was calculated for everybody else up until then, and since then, from what I understand, the new employees that are just retiring as well, that's still in that group, as I understand, are being calculated at contribution, regular employee contribution, plus whatever their percentage was of the number of years service they had, something, yes. So.
If we, if, excuse me, if we could, we might understand this a little better, if we call the percentage a premium, they they contributed towards the premium as far as paying the premium, and then they're making a contribution towards the total cost of their plan. So I think there's a, there's a, there's a payment, premium payment, and then there's a contribution, and those, those could be both. Or in some cases, if you're, if you're a hundred percent enough paying, you're not paying a premium, you're only making a contribution.
Correct, yeah.
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 Whatnot, so, and, excuse me, and the problem I see is, is that people who are paying only a percentage of the premium and not making a contribution fail to recognize in that policy, one line, and I don't have it furthered, but there's, there's, whether that talks about equivalent to the full-time, full-time employees.
So retirees should require to contribute a monthly stipend towards their own retirement health insurance plan at levels equal to those of active full-time employees.
Did you hear what he just said?
Yes.
That is in the policies, I think that is a part that was I won't say ignored, but it was omitted in.
Exactly.
It was missed.
For whatever reason, so that, that I think the two people we're talking about are paying a percentage of the premium, but not paying, making the contribution, that's, that's, that's what's going on too.
So.
Well, excuse me, Paul, one other thing, though. Do we know, Michael, that the commissioners at the time did not make a conscious exception to these two people that allowed this to happen?
I mean, I think we've gone back and looked at the best of what we have, and that's unless we can come up with a recording when exactly that decision was made.
Nothing, nothing in the minutes.
No, I, I mean, we haven't been able to find that so far, correct, and and we did look. It, it, the problem is, is obviously, the minutes, definitely, like even we do right now, it doesn't carry narrative, so you have to go to the tape or whatever, this at the time, it don't, I mean, there might have been a vote to do something, but if I mean, I don't know if you can sound specifically tied to these two points, whether it was any. So, I mean, unfortunately, the only thing we have right now to go on is what these two employees would tell us, that they were told at the time, with the way that they understood it at the time. As of right now, I mean, if we could get a date range when that decision was made, we could try to dig through the archives and see if we even have anything, but short of that, I don't know how we solve that part of it.
Okay.
But, just real quick, the issue that we are trying to figure out is, we do have two employees that are different than everybody else, which is why we're trying to see and say, well, if we do it the way we do for everybody else, we'd send you the bill, our notice of of billing, like we did, and say, this is your rate, and right now.
We're gonna solve this, because the other, however, number is gonna say, hey, I've got these other, it's not fair. And so this is a long-winded motion, but I don't know how else to capture it. Because I think it should be "and." And I think you need direction from us, though, it says "and." So, I'm gonna move that the retirees under sixty-five twenty-twenty-four health insurance contribution calculation formula be calculated in accordance with the policy recommended by staff. Therefore, adjustments should be made to the contribution levels of the two employees whose contributions are currently only being made based upon earned benefit level, rather than the earned benefit level and the applicable contribution rate as determined by the commissioners, or as negotiated with a union as part of a collective bargaining agreement to ensure consistency among all eligible retirees. So, basically, what I did was take your language that you had in the memo and plug it in there, because I think you need us to touch on all those things, even though it's so wordy.
I mean, obviously, we, we need to know what the justification is, and more importantly, obviously, going forward, when all of us aren't here anymore, again, that would be that record, hopefully, that would continue on.
And the justification for me is to ensure consistency among all eligible retirees.
I'll, I'll sign the motion for discussion.
Okay, and then there.
I just have one question that's just, can you say what the contribution would be for this year, do you understand, because, because they can only have single subscribers, so I was just wondering what the contribution rate would be?
What's the contribution rate for a single?
That's, I don't know, because I'm not, I don't take single insurance, that's what I'm asking.
They already set, they already set the retiree rates, yeah.
Oh, his, well, retiree rate should be the same as as the.
They're consistent among all retirees.
Is the rate, Monica's different for retirees than it is for the full-time?
Yes.
Well, the policy says it.
Oh, no, no.
Gee, I, I know what you're talking, Monica's talking.
The retirees.
Retirees.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's what I was asking.
No, so the, so the rates would be the same for the
But, but, the one, the rate that you just set, that's what I'm asking, what was it for single, because I'm too, that I was, it's not me.
Well, it's gonna be seventy next year.
No.
For sixty-five or single?
Single for twenty-five, yes.
The new rate, sixty-five, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry about my.
That was what I was asking.
So, my question is, probably I should print this, so that you can read it. Does this accomplish what we're trying to accomplish? I think it does.
Well, if you're trying to accomplish.
What you want.
Well.
This is what's gonna happen, this is gonna affect the thing, you're gonna go back, and you're gonna say to those two people who, who have not been making contributions, and paying only the percentage of the premium, that from now on, you're gonna have to make contributions, that's the net back of the motion, yes. And that is something the three of us need to say, do we want to go back now, after all these years, and say, whoops, made a mistake, you're gonna have to correct, if we're gonna correct it from now on, that's what you gotta say to yourself. Right, Michael?
Can't sum it up any better, I mean, that ultimately is the decision that you have to make. And why we obviously didn't feel that we could make that decision for, for them, it's obviously your policy kind of perspective, so.
Well, well. So the question, what I'm leaving out is whether whether we go back, right, that was not my intention.
You, no, your intention, your motion will affect these two people.
Yes.
Just you two.
Right.
Moving forward.
Fresh, you're right, another, which, we're not gonna go back and challenge them, what we should have, no.
No, definitely.
But we are going to the next next billing period, we're going to assess the contribution that we've never assessed.
That's what I feel my motion is doing.
Right, and that's what your motion does do.
Okay, so, so I have Tracy here with me, and she is one of the affected, but she, um, will only be on this five, five more months, June, so her question is, okay, well, lots of questions, but this question is, when what will she get when she retires, what will she have after June, because, because, you know, there's been a few changes throughout the time, so if she goes on Medicare, what is her?
Things change, and we've already discussed that. So, we're, we're working, we're working with Tracy on her rates for the time when she retires.
Through our supplemental.
So.
Health insurance before they having that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, that is, I'm not comfortable having that.
Well, yeah, but policy-wise, policy-wise, just in general, what, policy-wise, what happens with the, with the mill?
It goes on to state after this, that at the time that a retiree becomes eligible for Medicare supplemental insurance, they will also be eligible to receive an annual stipend of up to three thousand dollars, which may be used towards Medicare supplemental insurance. They may enroll in Medicare supplemental insurance plan provided by Hancock County, or they may enroll in their own private plan and receive a monthly stipend of up to two hundred and fifty dollars from Hancock County, assist with the coverage, I think that's what you guys.
But that's in policy, right?
Yeah, that's right now, I mean, until this changes.
And after that, there's no, there's no contribution after going Medicare?
You just get what, whatever up, we contribute basically whatever the formula that I just mentioned, whatever those amounts are, correct?
Right, we have a supplemental, we offer a supplemental, um,
Yeah, but is there, is there a contribution like there is for a full-time employee, this seventy, this sixty-five?
Depends on which way they, that employee decides to go. So like, so what Michael was just saying, is they're eligible for up to two hundred and fifty dollars a month towards an outside plan, or they can choose to go with allegiance, at which point, then they'll have the, the retiree contribution rate, that was, that was.
Is that sixty-five dollars?
That was set, no, it was set in December, it was like sixty-two, fifty.
Yeah, and again, that's in policy, we're not.
I will change it.
Ultimately, both, yeah.
But there's no reason we can't, that.
But you do set that second part.
Yeah, annually, so. So, Tracy, the policy is, is that basically, when you take Medicare, if you want your own supplemental insurance, they'll give you two, up to two fifty a month towards that, a three thousand dollars a year towards your supplement, but if you wanna stay with the county's allegiance supplemental plan, you'll pay sixty-two, fifty a month towards that.
Right, so if I chose to take Martin's point, which is only twenty-five dollars and change, I would have to bring my bill in each month, and you guys will pay that bill?
Yes.
Yes.
That's one thing, well, the county pays your whole personal supplemental bill, so you have to bring in your statements and your
Right.
Because if you have a supplemental plan that's more than three thousand, you have to pay the difference in January, each year for that.
Right.
But if you have less, then they'll pay up to the amount, correct? Okay, so that's it.
So if I bring that bill in each month, you would pay that bill?
Yes.
And and then do I get proof that you paid that bill? Oh, I'm just saying, because it's always due on the first of the month.
Well, I mean, we, I don't know if we need to discuss it here, but
Yeah, this is like an HR.
Normally, they bring in the coupons, and we take care of paying your bill every month.
You'll be notified, you'll be notified, Tracy, if they don't. Because your relationship between your supplemental insurance is between you, the insurance company, not between the insurance company and the county. So if, you know, everyone's.
So what I was paying before, now they're gonna change that up, and the insurance has increased to over two hundred and something dollars a month.
I don't know, that's, you're gonna need to talk to Monica about your personal.
Question if I could ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so, I understand that, what you're saying with Tracy, um, and that is the, we'll call it the buyout or or the supplement or whatever it is, I'm not sure what you call it anymore. Um, that is, even though we've, we haven't worked less than, we've worked less than twenty years, that's one question. The second thing is more, it's like a statement. it's like a statement, um, when I got my new bill in January that showed me what my increase would be, I didn't understand the math, because there's a math error on the bill. Um, and I was sitting there this, I didn't look at it again because I was kind of upset, kind of worked up. So, I just honestly afraid about it, and I wasn't quite sure what to do or what to say. Um, so, what I did was this morning, I came in, and I sat down and took a look at it, and I found the math error. Um, and what you're saying, I understand. Um, and I, and now I, I've taken my little bill, and I've done all the math on it, and I, I understand, and I respect what you're saying. Um, if you need to go back in minutes, I'm not sure it's in minutes, I left in July, um, two thousand sixteen, so that can give you a mark, um, if you want to go back. All I know is, um, what I had been told for years, when I did my homework and talked to the prior county clerk, two previous county commissioners, um, that's all I know about how the interpretation of the policy was. Um, but, I do understand what you're saying. Um, if you want to go back and look in minutes, um, feel free, that's fine, I don't mind, I understand. But what this is doing is, um, like Tracy said, mine is, is an increase of two hundred and eight dollars a month. Over the next five months, it's going to be a thousand forty dollars increase out of my pocket to make my contribution. Um, and I gladly do that, but what I don't know if you guys realize, is this is not a qualifying event. This is a policy change. So, even if I were a person that said, I don't want to do this, I want to get out, I'm not going to do this, I couldn't get other coverage because it's not a qualifying event, it's a policy change. So, I'm locked in for the next five months for another thousand forty dollars out of my pocket. And I'm happy to do that, I've, I have been blessed, and I'm happy to do that, um, and it's only two people, it's me and Tracy, I don't know what her financial situation is, um, but I wanted you guys to know, I don't know if that was even thought of at the time. If the change could have been made in July, and then people maybe would have had a choice of what they wanted to do. Um, and then my, I guess my third question is, if come July, if I'm sixty-one years, I'm old, am I sixty-one? Um, if I'm sixty-one years old and I want to opt for the buyout, can I? And rather than answering those questions here in this meeting, if you guys would, if Michael would either send me the, the information, I can go through the information and figure it out, and then I can tell him, and we can work together, and I can make that decision on my own, rather than taking up your time. So, and I do appreciate the conversation that you guys are having out loud in this open, public meeting.
Again, these are like HR things.
Yes.
I think HR needs to handle.
I, I am curious, so what is the July, what's the significance of July?
Oh, when you guys said if you want to go back and look at the minutes to see if that interpretation was approved?
No, but I thought...
The rates change.
Oh, and your rates change, yeah, your open enrollment is in June for Hancock County, and your rates change in July.
Okay, that's, that's my question, yeah. Send you one last question. The policy that Michael read, the sentence with regards to the contribution being the same as full-time employees in the contract, was that in the personnel's policy when you retired?
Um, 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 not sure, um, I actually didn't print my old policy that I had back from two thousand sixteen. I'm not sure, the language sounds familiar, I don't know if it was in the first half or the second half, but I, like Mike said, it could be interpreted either way.
Okay, but I'm just curious, because we haven't seen an, an amendment since twenty sixteen, have we, in the policy? No, okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's, my motion was seconded.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that gets us where we need to be, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready, uh, for workforce development?
Yes. Thank you.
Important discussion, folks.
See how the sausage got made today?
Yeah.
Uh, good, still morning, right? Good morning. Um, just wanted to give an update on what's happening with the Northeastern Workforce Development Board, uh, and then give Kelly Cochran, who works with the EMDC, is our service provider, to give a program update about what's happening here locally. So, uh, since I was here last, uh, the, we've gone through a pretty extensive, uh, monitoring, uh, from the USDL, uh, every three years, each one of the three boards gets monitored, then every six years, you get monitored fiscally, so this, uh, last fall, uh, this fall, we were monitored uh, programmatically, it included fiscal monitor. So, uh, that monitoring entails, uh, two days of interviews with a large team from, uh, USDL, uh, included, uh, the, uh, USDL team, interviewing participants, uh, interviewing, uh, staff from the EMDC and ACAP, and obviously looking into the records and the files of all that gets done, the disciplines and all, and set up with our plan. So, we, uh, at the, at the conclusion, it was very, it was very extensive, it was the first time I've been through it personally, because I enrolled, but, uh, really happy to report we did, uh, really well, um, the, uh, there were no concerns, there were no findings, which is outstanding for, um, for our situation kind of in transition, and as well, there were four notable, uh, best practices or promising practices that were being done by the service providers, so, uh, so that was pretty clear. We're, we're waiting for our official final report out, which we hope will happen sometime in February, they'll give us all the written information that we want. They, they'll give us recommendations on areas to improve and, and things like that, but overall, we really hit it on the ballpark. So, I was just very impressed with, uh, everyone's work and team effort, uh, from, from the EMDC and ACAP, and they represented the state really well, so. Uh, there's a few other things that, uh, we've been really, we've been doing, uh, that are important, wanted to, you know, bring you up to speed on is, we just recently rolled out Earn While You Learn, uh, policy, so, uh, we received five hundred thousand dollars of funds up to the governor's office, uh, called the workers' fund, and it was really largely developed so each one of the three boards could, uh, create innovative approaches toward addressing workforce issues post-COVID. So, we took our, we took a portion of our funds, uh, and cited that, um, we would provide individuals who are, uh, fall into the poverty category, maybe minors, uh, uh, you know, all of the different, uh, uh, long-term unemployed from the current community, justice community, and give them an opportunity to get into occupational skills training, uh, and also receive up to a two thousand dollar stipend uh, when they do that. So, you know, as you all know, it's a tough time, I mean, it's, you know, prices and everything are going up around rent and gas and fuel and everything else, so hopefully, when one of the participants is thinking about, should I do this training as compared to, you know, doing this other, doing this other job that's not going, perhaps it may as well put them into a, a career pathway that'll give them some, you know, real promise, um, this is an opportunity for them to at least get a little help from us, so. So, we just rolled out that policy, you know, did a training yesterday with about twenty-five of early staff from the EMDC and ACAP, but look forward to seeing how that all plays out, um. We also, um, we're going to be going up north for our, uh, for our next quarterly board meeting, we were down here in Hancock in the fall, so we'll be going up north, uh, into West County, and, uh, hopefully having an in-person quarterly board meeting there, um, and you know, the, the one other thing that, um, I just want to say, if we, I don't know if you got some numbers from us in our, if you didn't, we can get you some economic numbers, but, uh, it's challenging right now to, uh, drum up, uh, new participants, uh, and some of that's a good, good thing, uh, because unemployment, the unemployment, uh, rate is way down, you know, uh, so, but at the same time, I'll turn this over to Kelly here just a little bit, you know, she represents the local area, uh, we, we like to have our numbers strong, uh, you know, the youth numbers, engaged youth right now, it's difficult right across the state and across the country, uh, it's, uh, our adult program, uh, for the most part, it's doing pretty good, other parts of the state have been struggling a little bit, but ours seems to be somewhat solid, and obviously, the dislocated workers are always, uh, in flux, and those are, those participants who, uh, lose their job and are displaced, and we're trying to, we come in and help through rapid response and other, uh, programs to put them back in the workplace, do some retraining for them, so. Uh, and a quest grant, uh, which I mentioned at the last, uh, uh, board meeting, um, the quest grant is really kind of a, our opioid grant ran out, it's a, it's a disaster relief grant, opioid grant ran out, uh, second chances grant is another name for it, uh, we were awarded the quest grant, um, and so, we're really ramping up, I'm making connections and referrals and doing a lot of, uh, hard work and outreach with uh, some of the adverse populations we work with that have many, many barriers, uh, and one of the areas we're really focusing on is, uh, you know, the incarcerated population, and, uh, trying to get in the doors of each one of the county jails and state facilities, and so, I'll, uh, uh, I know Kelly's doing some work here with the county, um, and give you an update on how that's going. So, that's really, uh, the, the update from, from my end, and, uh, if you have any questions, we'll be, like, answered.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I'll, I'll look for you. I'll ask my question after you come in.
Okay, I, I basically am here with full of thanks, um, thank you for, um, welcoming, welcoming us into, um, the jail. I come in probably three out of four weeks, um, and have referrals, um, which sets up, and, um, I have a little flyer, um, and he goes around and chats, and, um, I do initial interviews with folks and see what needs may be, um, we might not be the right fit, it might be connecting them, um, and some names, and I leave, leave notes, um, as well as a little to-do list of things to get ready, um, we have enrolled folks in our quest grant, we've also made referrals, um, for individuals who are relocating to another service provider, so we've made that referral, um, where we've met with them, and then they hit the, hit the ground running um, with another service provider, um, so we're thankful for that, um, and actually use the, use the narrative of the great work, uh, to influence some other counties, so thank you, um, for leading the way there, we appreciate it. Um, and also just great partnerships, I mean, Hancock County is home to me, so I have home court advantage and love there, um, but working with the local adult ed's, um, to really bring and fill in some of those gaps, um, we are out there searching for folks who might be eligible and ready, um, for some workforce training, there are many grants available or, or offerings for some free classes, um, and really getting the word out there that those support services that come with WEOA and Quest, which we are the service provider for, can really fill in some of those gaps, um, and so, you know, sometimes the, the ad-free to students, um, is what people, no, I'm giving that class free, I'm all set, um, and we, we come in and, and, and are sharing um, quite frequently with resource and stakeholder meetings to make sure other organizations and agencies know about that, that wraparound service. Um, and then as well as the employer side, um, I have several chamber meetings coming up, um, where most businesses, you'll see on Facebook, getting ready to, you know, advertising for the next season, um, how can we be strategic in some of that, um, both recruiting and upskilling for businesses, um, working with some of the larger organizations on registered apprenticeships in this area, and really growing, seeing Hancock County, um, come alive on that interactive new website for registered apprenticeship, and seeing some work come up this, this way, we are a part of that, and want to continue that, so. Questions for me?
Well, first, I just want to point out that, uh, I think our jail administrator just got a, a big compliment there.
Sure, sure.
That's a lot of good news, we had, you know, a, uh, gentleman earns GED not long ago, and those are, those are nice things to hear come out of the jail. You mentioned recovery, and, and I can tell you as an employer, uh, it's just unbelievable, you know, the folks that we see coming through the door with substance abuse problems that are just, you know, don't give them... We, for instance, we couldn't hire them because of that, and any, any, you know, I know that's an uphill battle, but, you know, thank you for, you know, working to, because I don't know how you, I, I just don't know how to, how to begin to solve that, and, and it sounds like you're making some efforts to do that, uh, and i- it's sad that, that the place to do a lot of that is in the jail, but that's reality, and that's where a lot of people end up before they can start their road to recovery, so thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Got our information from, who's, is it, from Three Rivers? Is there any action that we need to take on?
Yeah.
So, he, he didn't want to just go through some of these documents with you, um, find out whether or not it hit everything that you were looking for, whether there might be other stuff, and whether you want to mention those to him right now so he can make those changes, or whether you want him to meet with Miller and me separately to make sure anything else that needed to be included for projects or things associated with the, the district and stuff are there, and then he does have a motion, I think he wants to share for you to get to the next step, which is the public hearing, and, and ultimately, obviously, some type of final vote for resolution to, to, to address the remaining items, so.
Sure, thank, thank you, uh, M- Manager Crocker, uh, Commissioners, good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good, uh, so, a- a- as Mr. Crocker summarized today, sort of a, uh, intermediate step, so I, I think we can be as brief or as detailed as, as, uh, you would like. Um, essentially, at the end of our discussion, or whenever, uh, you're ready, what I'll be asking for, and I, I'll read it to you, is a, uh, motion to authorize the county attorney and county manager to finalize and execute all necessary documents, uh, to hold a public hearing, followed by possible action on the Hancock County Three Rivers Solar Power Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing Development Program and Credit Enhancement Agreement on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, or another date deemed convenient to the county and developer, uh, so, that's the ultimate motion I'm asking for, um, but what I'd like to do today is, uh, I do have two specific points to ask you, uh, if you'd like to provide any input or direction to staff uh, and myself.
Can I, can I just interrupt a second? The ultimate action that you're looking for is the ultimate action today?
It, yeah, would just, no, no, uh...
Okay, so could you email it to to Michael or myself so that I cover all of, because I was trying to write as you were speaking, and I gave up?
Yeah, so I, I can rephrase it at the end, all, all I'm asking for is, is a, is a motion just to establish a public hearing on February sixth.
Okay, that's what I boiled it down to, but you've covered a lot of ground that I wasn't sure of.
I did, I, I included the full titles of documents, and that, that's what made it lengthy, uh, but that, that's essentially just what we're doing, is, is essentially a check-in, and, uh, the documents that are before you are the uh, development program draft, the credit enhancement agreement draft, uh, the community benefit agreement draft, and then some component documents that, uh, ultimately get wrapped into the development program, which are the, the official public notice to call the public hearing, uh, a, a table breaking down the project costs, that's what, uh, projects, the TIF funds can be spent on. Um, and the two pieces that I just wanted to touch base with you all to, uh, get an opportunity for you to provide input, uh, on this drafting stage, um, are, are two, two points, uh, so the first is the, uh, areas to be included in the TIF, um, so the, uh, proposal before you, just although we haven't finalized the maps yet, uh, they just cover the project area, and so that's enough to capture the, uh, anticipated increased value by the solar field. Cover the project area and so that's enough to capture the uh anticipated increased value by the solar field. Um, we could, if there's interest uh from the county, uh. Broaden that to include other areas that the county wants to capture in a TIF, so typically these are. Areas that uh you would anticipate uh future development in and want to see future development in within the UT and particularly within the. Uh portions of the UT impacted by this project. Um, commonly, what we do is create at minimum a. County tract that includes the roads in the area that will be uh primarily impacted by the project or that you expect. Uh, would uh have some connection to some anticipated or desired economic development. Um, so at, at minimum, that would be my recommendation is to at least create a county tract to. Capture those roads because ultimately consistent with the past conversations we've had, you know, my goal with this. And I think it's consistent with your goal is do whatever we need to do to preserve the maximum flexibility for spending TIF funds.
Yes. If we discussed it with uh Millard in terms of what, if anything he feels uh would give us flexibility. Well, and I think that that's what you outlined at the very beginning, I think, I think it needs to be a huddle between Michael and Miller to counsel.
Yeah, I mean, if you're okay with that, then I see.
Yes.
Yeah.
Show consensus.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add?
Okay, then that, that is what uh uh we'll do is I'll, I'll huddle with Miller to Michael and uh we can um. Uh, identify additional areas and that's what will be presented uh for the public hearing uh and your consideration on uh February sixth.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to schedule a public hearing for the proposed Three Rivers TIF Development Program for, for, for September. For February sixth, twenty twenty-four, is that?
Yeah, yeah, as long as uh you, you would agree that your motion uh authorizes us to issue all the necessary documents uh to. Effectuate that public hearing, um and if we need to reschedule that for any reason, uh we have authority to set it for a next. Meeting without coming back to you folks.
Okay, and issue, uh, excuse me, and issue all relevant public documents required, uh required.
Yep, that, that, that will do it.
Okay, so my motion is this, move to schedule a public hearing for the proposed Three Rivers TIF Development Program for February sixth. Twenty twenty-four, issue all relevant uh documents.
He needs uh, he needs the authority to reschedule that without coming back to us, so.
He can make that request.
I don't even talk. He just did. I mean, he's, he's asking now in this motion, just in case, in case something happens, he needs to reschedule.
All right, I, I think commissioner, if you just modify your, your motion to say February sixth or another date deemed appropriate by the county manager. That, that will give us sufficient authority to avoid another intermediate uh meeting.
That's in there. And I'll read it in a few seconds if you want.
Just real quick, is that public hearing gonna be at the beginning? So I mean, we would label it as like eight thirty on that day.
Okay, so, I'm gonna reread it, move to schedule a public hearing for proposed Three Rivers TIF Development Program for February sixth. Twenty twenty-four, or other date is deemed appropriate by the county administrator and issue all relevant documentation. A second motion. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right.
Uh, so i- if I made the other, I don't need further action, but just uh some uh. If, if, if you wanna provide any further direction, the other point uh that I wanted to raise of the, if there's any particular projects uh that you would like identified, you know, I, I, I trust. Between the county administrator and uh Millard will, will probably have a good sense of uh what your priorities are and can specifically identify some projects. But if there's anything in particular um you have in mind, uh I, you, you, you don't have to say it now, but if you could send it to uh the county manager, we can make sure that that's uh. Incorporated into the drafts.
What about? Well, I, I don't know exactly if there's anything in particular, but I mean, the only thing obviously that comes to mind, but maybe be relevant for this, but how we had an issue with. Trying to get the uh ARPA funding, funding for Eagle Island, so I'm not sure. What might be able to get included just to make a similar circumstance in the future a little bit easier for us.
I think we talked about that before and the tips we have in place now would have to renegotiate in those, that, and this tip is not going to be available for. How long, how long before TIF funds would be available?
Um, Phil, Phil Saucers on the, the call, I don't know if he'd be able to, I, I can't recall the uh anticipated operational date.
Even still, it would be.
Yeah, we, we were talking a couple of years, yeah.
Could be, yeah, so, oh, yeah.
So, I just meant like, I, I guess my feeling is more like if we could try to build in some kind of flexibility into it so that if something else were to come up in the future.
Are, are you aware about the issue on the uh assistance for Eagle Island for fire protection that, that we tried to take from the TIF money?
Yes, yes, no, I'm aware, I believe I have a uh.
And John's comment was, is that if there's some way we could build into this TIF agreement, some general provision to help us deal with similar.
Yeah, and, and we have and uh will, and we can certainly identify with some specificity, the particular projects, but as it's drafted now. Uh, you'll benefit from the uh full scope of project costs that are allowed under the current statute that weren't allowed under the statute at the time. Of the prior TIF you're referencing, so um this, this, we'll, we'll address that, that problem.
And that problem is, i- is a ver- emergency management, that would be that project that. Yeah, that is covered under those, uh, those changes.
I mean, we'll go down through it obviously, but there's a greatly enhanced flexibility beyond what there was before, so.
Okay, great, all right.
That's all I needed, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And do we have any comments from county administrator?
What's that?
And any comments from commissioners on future agenda items? It's just as I'm, I'm, I still have a problem on first meeting March.
Is it just a day or the week?
Uh, that week.
The whole week.
Well, that week until Wednesday. Which, that, really, no, that week until Thursday, I wouldn't be back in town, so. I would be available, but, but I mean, I may not. So you're thinking maybe changing it to the twelfth? Changing it or, I gotta miss it, you know, I, I.
Well, I know it would be uh free, but in April I have five Tuesdays. If we were to move March, every single couple of weeks, so in twelve, twenty-sixth, April ninth, April twenty-third, then we could be back on schedule for May.
Yeah, that's true.
That would, that would require a five or six changes.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, really, I'm not sure that. Me not being here is gonna be, you know, I can't think of anything going on, I, I just wanna be upfront with this. And we got all kinds of. Shifted it all, that's fine with me, 'cause now I've got Tuesdays, I pretty much have it set for Tuesdays to always be off, so.
Yeah. What about staff? If we, how, how difficult is it to, to change Tuesdays? This, this gives us Tuesdays, every other Tuesday right up till end, 'cause you know how, we have, we have five Tuesdays in a month and you go three weeks without a meeting. This way we'd have.
I mean, obviously on any of the calendar stuff that we've already posted, we have to change those notices and get the other notices out in terms of preparation and stuff. As long as we had enough time, obviously, we can arrange it so that the department heads have those dates in advance so that there's not. So you're not making a change and saying, hey, now I need your stuff in two days, you know, so if we know what they are, but.
Well, that would be determined right now if we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
I, looking ahead, is there a lot happening on the?
I can't envision it, but knowing that you're not here, Paul, we could throw a bunch of stuff on. But I mean.
I get more than that. What's our um? What's our date on uh the uh grant?
So we've said that right now that they would submit uh by, I don't know, February eighth. And then you would presumably, I mean, you could have the beginning of the reviews occur even the following week at that meeting, so. Um, so the advertisement, all that stuff's gone out, I sent letters to all the ones that have received it in the past or expressed interest specifically already.
So February isn't changed, we'll track the February, it would be March, we'll set changes.
Start to have March with pause. So that's why I'm saying it might be better to, uh, we don't wanna do it without pause and put.
We don't wanna do those grants.
Yeah.
No, no.
They've already done it with two people, you know. So uh, I would say. We shift, try to do the shift for the two months.
I hadn't thought about that.
So we meet on the twelfth of March and the twenty-sixth of March, we meet on April. Ninth and April twenty-third, and we may be back on schedule for the first Tuesday in May, which is the seventh. Respect, so, so uh.
If this will be the staff.
Yeah, okay. I think it's.
Let's, let's do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't asking that.
Too late. I was suggesting that. John agrees, I think that's good. So let's do it.
So that originally was a motion, wasn't it? Did, did I, just imagine that.
Do what?
Was it a motion?
Was it a motion?
I didn't make it a motion.
Somebody should.
I mean, should we? Yeah, just so, because you are changing your normal scheduled meeting.
Well, can you make any one minute?
Because I.
Okay, I'm gonna move that our meetings. The meeting dates be altered. From, meeting dates be altered in March. To March twelfth and twenty-sixth. And April the ninth and twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody ready for my next motion?
Yes.
Uh, no, uh, that's again, well, we had a request made by the union for information. Has that been complied with? Because there was a.
The last thing I know, it's just the training records that they're finishing being compiled. And I was told, I was told that that, they were trying to finish that off this week, this is the latest thing I was told as of yesterday.
Are we talking about the employee that left?
The only one that I'm aware of is the one for uh essentially the.
Process for?
Yeah.
The process for promotion?
Oh, yeah. I've seen one I'm aware of, it doesn't mean.
I guess, yeah, okay, with, with what you know, is there any reason to schedule a degender item to deal with that next meeting?
I guess it depends on what comes up over the next couple of days. I mean, if they submit the materials and the union doesn't have a response, then I would, or their response isn't. Then I would say no, but those are two big yes, I guess.
Thinking about the process, I don't, what's training records have to do?
It was part of the request is what I was told.
That's not bad of processes.
That was part of the email from the union, is there a question for training records?
So that really is, it's, it's. Well, I guess my, the problem generally is, is that uh. I perceive some significant flaws in process that's being used for promotions and. I'm not sure how we address that. Yes, we find, isn't the, so the unions uh testing such. Yeah, but this is really, this is really. This is a result of a problem that uh. The bottom line is, is that we have currently policy that's not being followed, you know. Should we be concerned about enough to address it or ignore it or what?
Are you having to address, since it's going to be?
Well, it's difficult to, to even give you more information without to, to gender item and wrap some of the executive sessions.
Well, well, we'll look and see what happens next week, Michael, we need to start putting it on, it's got. Agenda item under executive session. I'm gonna move to the draft.
Second.
What's in favor?
Hi.
All right, hi.
Lots of stuff to sign, I'll.